Pay your money for additional projects for the city. And that was successfully completed this morning. The underwriter, Raymond James, successfully priced the issue. And we were just talking about it before the meeting. The pricing was successfully done and was completed right before interest rates increased fairly substantially later in the day. So everyone was very pleased with that. The mayor was involved with the pricing and city staffers, and it went very well. So you had previously authorized the execution of a bond purchase agreement if the State Bond Commission requirements were exceeded for refundings of this type and there were sufficient savings. And as you'll see, the savings far exceeded that amount. And according to the mayor, signed the bond purchase agreement. The bonds sale was completed. You have up for adoption, final adoption today. The bond ordinance that will provide all the details of the bond sale, but all the savings are locked in now. You have a one-page summary sheet, which if you could look at this, I'll go through it. It won't take much time, but I think it has some very good information for you. The size of the refunding bond issue is 11 million. And again, there's no extension of the debt. All we're doing is reducing the payments the city makes on the outstanding indebtedness. If you look at the reduction of your debt service payments, the total reduction is $1,622,000. That's taken into account all cost of issuing the bonds and prior to any transfers. And I'll discuss those transfers in the next line. The next line has net savings after issuance costs and transfers of about $875,000. That's the amount after use of the reserve fund from the 2005 issue. You had a reserve fund that was funded with cash for that bond issue. We no longer need to maintain that because we're refunding that issue. So we can use that in the escrow and reduce the amount of your outstanding bonds. So the net benefit, net of the transfers and after the issuance cost, $875,000 roughly. The next line has something that's important to us. It ties in with the State Bond Commission guidelines for economic refundings of this type. You'll see that there was a 5.88% present value savings attained with this refinancing. That's a very high percentage. State Bond Commission guideline provides for 1.5%. So you've attained a refunding that saves a lot more money than the State Bond Commission guidelines provide for. The outstanding bonds have interest rates up to 4.5% and 4.25% on the two issues. You've reduced it down to 1.99%. And then finally, and perhaps even most importantly, your bond rating. You were upgraded by standard and pores. You upgraded from a AA minus, one notch up to a AA. There's only two ratings higher than that. I'm not aware of any municipal ratings higher than this. And there's only a small handful that have this rating. That's very, very important. And that meant the absolutely lowest interest rates when you refinance today. So that's a real plus, and that's going to affect future bond sales. Whenever you go out into the capital market, you will get the very lowest interest rate.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comments? Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Number two, an order to declare surplus and authorize the sale of items listed below to sell on govdeals.com. Mr. Ernest Peters.
We come to the council to clarify these items surplus and authorization to sell them on govdeals. They are listed there. List of automobiles, few printers, and other items as such.
Lots of Dell computers. What is lots?
I like a lot, huh? More than one, huh?
I think it should not be there. There's a lot of them, just several. I'm not sure of the actual count myself. They just shrink wrapped a bunch of them.
Any council comments or questions? Any public comment? Number three, an order is to revise the city personnel... City personnel policy to delete mileage reimbursement for taking vehicles. Mayor Pete Penelope.
Basically, once again, we just feel like it's a good time to rescind the policy on charging our police officers and other people in the city for mileage past a certain point that they were having before. So we're asking the council to finalize removing this ordinance.
Any questions in the council? Comments? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that you were going to provide some offset cost in, I think, in the last meeting?
Basically, what we've done to offset it was streets and the street department. We've taken two vehicles and parked them. Now employees come in and drive the vehicles when they're here at work. Any employees that are on call, we're not going to take away vehicles. But employees that come to work and drive, like particularly in the building department where we do inspections and code enforcement, those vehicles are parked. If you pass by, you can see them on a corner. So we've set vehicles on lots that aren't needed to be driven back and forth to homes. So that's kind of offset some of this mileage reimbursement charge. Parks and grounds also. As far as police department and doing that, there's a quagmire of civil service issues that you do for one, you must do for all. So if I pulled cars with the police department or the fire department, John, you would have to pull them off. And you can't do that because they're on call 24/7. So we can look in other areas in the city where we truly don't need cars going home, and we offset some of that by making vehicles stay on site.
Are any vehicles going to be dropped on lots now that we do provide for the...
We haven't gone through all the departments, but so far, we're about six. This is an average across the board of anywhere from $200 to $500 a year per people who are paying this fee, this expense that they won't have to pay. For the most part, 90% being police officers.
All right. Any public comment or questions? Go forward. An order to approve rezoning request by First Thesaurus communities community. Cassandra Dannerfield, rezoned the remaining west portion of a lot located at 707 West Coleman Street. From RS3 to MXC in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden, Jr., dated revised 5/18/2005. Recommended approval by zoning commission. Josh Taylor.
It was simply a paperwork deal. We think it was an honest mistake that was made on the front end. Half of the property is zoned residential, RS3. Half of it is on mixed use. And it's making it where we can't sign off on zoning verification letters whenever they bring in for businesses. So this is just to bring everything into compliance. It's more...
As a shopping center home?
Yes. So I know you'd asked me to check into the bank or whatever, but to be honest, all involved want it to kind of... They want it to be in compliance, so they really doesn't matter.
Any further council questions or comments? Comments from the public?
Ms. Bostick, 112 M Drive. I notice that this is the... Isn't this the vacant area that...
No.
...undevolved that is adjacent to the junior high school?
No. This is actually... The building makes an L, and half of the building is in residential. So it is the lot.
So it's the existing building?
Yes.
So that lot that is adjacent to the junior high school property is not...
That's not included in this.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments from the public? Number five, an order is to approve rezoning request by Tangi East. L.O. City rezoned Track D of Providence Ridge. Phase two, 29.53 acres from CH to RS5 located. Temp address 17 on Dr. John Lambert Drive. In accordance with survey by Mickey L. Robertson dated 9/30/2008. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
CH doesn't allow for residential. This is out by the hospital on Airport Road. They want to develop a subdivision, so they're rezoning to RS5, which gives them the option of smaller lots. But as of now, everything they presented is about 70-foot lots. But it gives them the option, so...
Any council questions or comments?
And just for any subdivision that comes through, it's still going to have to go through the process of coming here. This is strictly the rezoning. They haven't brought the plans, the final plans for any infrastructure, anything to us yet. So this is strictly just to get it to where they're capable of designing that subdivision. So that's it.
Any public comment or question? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
We'll go right into our regularly scheduled council meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Mr. Ernest, would you leave some prayer, please?
(Inaudible) thank you for this day and thank you for your bountiful blessing. Now God has become just the business aspect of the council and the city leading guy. Give us the direction of what we can take the city to new levels and to higher heights. Leading God to the council and the mayor and the administration to take care of all the people and the employees and the citizens. Keep up. God will pray.
Chief John Thompson, could you leave some flag, please?
(Inaudible).
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 Mr. Ernest, you didn't want to come tonight, too. Thank you very much for that. Beautiful prayer.
Why did he not want to come, Mr. Mayor?
He was busy.
Oh, okay.
Council reports will start if the council are ready to present goals to the administration of the public. We'll start to my right with Councilman Blunt. Would you move right on over? That's all right, councilman.
Okay, goal for 2015. Number one, sidewalks on East Mary Street. And number two, more street lighting on East Church Street. Number three, better drainage system on Moose Drive. Four, work with the whole East Department, get the drying down. Five, make sure open on subdivision overlay is completed.
I will say today that we put in the order to put a light on on the end of the street by Morrison Road. It's a magazine.
Thank you.
So that should have a light there in the next month, I hope.
Thank you. Councilman Hood?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. President and Mayor, my goals for 2015 for District Two will be to complete sidewalks on North General Persian Street from West Robert to the university over by the baseball field. Two, to complete drainage repairs on Magnolia and Hazel Street. Three, repair and overlay East Park Street. Four, continue to rehab and repairs of the sewage system to the southeast portion of District Two, which is over by Cape Street. There's continuous problems there, so I want to stay on top of that, please. Five, cover the ditches on parts of... It's sporadic on West Michigan and Spruce Street. That's... That used to make Mayor Foster real happy. Six, repairs in addition to brick pavers on east side of North Cypress Street, as they are in downtown. I get numerous requests for that. And then seven, this is always on my list, the widening of Sanders Avenue, especially between Range Road and Chestnut Street.
Thank you, Councilman Hood. Goals, thank you, sir. Before I give my goals, I wanted to clarify something that the Daily Star did a story or article, I think they're going to do on all the councilmen. I happened to be first, and I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I've had several comments from constituents and friends wanting to know why I was against rental properties. I reread the article, and I don't think I saw it, I said, anywhere in the article that I was against rental properties. I think even if I was against rental properties, we couldn't stop people from renting their property. I do think there are some improvements that need to be made, and we did talk about that. And Andreh discussed it, and Councilman Marshall and I discussed trying to really work on attacking the symptoms and studying case law to see if there is something more that can be done. So I just wanted to clarify that I am not against rental properties. So my goals. Number one, I want to support the administration and the police department efforts to reduce crime. attended a neighborhood watch meeting in Whitmore Acres, and it's a big concern in that area. A lot of burglaries and car burglaries and things being stole out of yards and a couple of home burglaries, so that's a big concern. Want to continue to support the council, Councilman Marshall and the mayor and their after-school initiative. Think that goes to the crime issue. A big issue for me, and I think it should be for all of us in my district, Southeastern is a big part of my district. We need to join and enhance in any way the efforts to save Southeastern, and we'll have a resolution tonight offered in that respect. And like to work on sidewalks in my district, particular Western Avenue from Martin's to the con, large number of students utilize Western Avenue. And they have a major drainage issue on the north side of Long Lake subdivision and mainly, or lastly, I want to be... Continue to be accessible to my constituents. So Councilwoman Beard?
I would like to clean the ditch and drains and the canals throughout District Three for better water flow. We've been having problems because of the leaves and trash in those areas that's keeping the water from flowing and a lot of overgrowth bushes and stuff like that inside the canals. It also slows the drainage. I'd like to add surface drainage with the iron mesh filters to prevent the trash blockage. Add storefront images to the warehouses and green spaces. Repair a bridge on South Hazel Street. Add turn lanes on east side of Morrison at Palmetto and restripe the right of way from Palmetto to Route Simone. I would like a walk-in bridge connecting Florida Street for St. Bruce to Hammond Junior High for the kids, so they won't have to walk all the way around Coleman. I'd like to tear down the fence around Z Mary and integrate Greenwood Park neighborhoods. Make sure that we... Enhance that area, so when we tear those walls down, you won't see any blight or anything in that area. I'd also like to work with Councilman Marshall in District Four on the Corbin-Coleman corridor with the Home Zone Initiative, HUG Zone Initiative. And also work with him on that Route St. Martin area for the trash. We don't have enough dumpsters around those apartment complexes if the trash is overflowing the dumpsters.
So my list is three pages, but I don't want to read the first one. So basically, you know, in District Four, some of these things are short-term and some long-term. You know, there's a full term, but we'll work on some now, and hopefully we'll get them done within the first... Within this term. I want to focus on sidewalks on Old Baton Rouge Highway. That's been a big issue for a lot of the residents on Lakewood, who we deal with a lot of pedestrian traffic on Old Baton Rouge Highway, where they're walking from the apartments down to for commerce. So I think OB Highway sidewalks, that's a state road, so we'll have to start that conversation. Along with that, there's also a big rainwater issue on Timber Lane, Layton, and Brandy, where we need to look at other crossovers to move that water from that side across Old Baton Rouge Highway and through the canals. And there are some options there, and that's a big deal, because there's a lot of flooding in Timber Lane that results from how that water flows on that side of town. Continue to work on the drainage issues in Velo West that leads through Rue Kane or Rue Con. We want to finish up that sewer rehabilitation project in Pine Hill. That's already pretty much in motion, but there's some things still to do. Road overlay on Tammy Drive, which is one of the roads that we just adopted last year, so hopefully we'll get that done this year. We did get four lights installed on Tammy Drive, so for the first time, that actual street has lights on it, which has been a big plus for the citizens out there. So that got done before Buddy retired, so I appreciate that very much. If the administration's going to take on the project, I don't know where we are with the Morrison Road, Roger Moore Parkway sidewalk initiative, but I know that's been talked about, and hopefully we can see some movement in that area. And then along with Councilman Beard, we obviously share Rue St. Martin, and we definitely want to work on that, what she just mentioned, along with the Corbin-Coleman corridor. We think that's a great area for some economic development, and we would like to share in that effort with the mayor. Like Councilman Williams said, want to obviously work with the mayor and the council and all the other stakeholders, which includes Southeastern, casual parent schools, and some of our, like the National League of Cities, to continue to work on our developing our citywide after school, out-of-school time network. That's going to be very important. Just a couple more inside there. We're going to... I want to really introduce a few ordinances this year that's going to focus on safe community initiatives, and we have a couple of those in the works right now, which we think that can work, that we kind of started before the year ended. And during the campaign, we kind of stopped, and then we'll finish that up and go forward, which also includes Biden housing as well. And just if we take on the initiative to look at an event center in the next year or two, we think that would be a great initiative to work on, and I would love to be able to support whatever we do in that area. And that's my report.
Mayor?
Okay. Well, obviously, we'll work with each and every one of you on your projects. It's very important for the administration to help you all achieve your goals and honestly while we can achieve all of them, if not most of them. That being said, with SLU, what we did do, Webb, Anderson, and I took a ride out to the park. We were looking at the wet park, because we're going to build another one in Semerit. And we noticed that the equipment was in horrible shape. So I made a phone call to Southeastern, told them, said, "Listen, I don't know what the agreement was between us before, but if you continue to go ahead and take care of all your fields, we do have a lot of citizens that use that park." We noticed while we were out there. So I said, "We will handle all of your equipment." So in that light, I talked to Leon White. He's out there, and he's replaced... I think out of three swing sets, they had one swing actually sitting there operational. "We're going to handle all their equipment. They're going to clean up the front face where they had poles, and we'll do anything in Southeastern we can do to help them out." As far as... You know, I did see something on the news, and it was called the Brilliant Bus. Did you see that?
Yeah.
It was a bus that had...
Oh, yes, I did see that.
It had the computers in it, a teacher with it.
Yeah.
And it actually went into neighborhoods after the kids came to the bus. I thought that was a great thing, and I mentioned that to Charles and Grants to see if there was something down the road, maybe we could get some grant money to create a bus like that. That'd be really great. You know, as of now and always for the last 12 years, we didn't put a lot of money into sidewalks. And if I'm not mistaken, is it $150,000, Chuck, that we can't go over to do work within our own city? So that being said, on the next budget, if y'all would all consider possibly affording the city to have $149,999? We could do a lot of sidewalks in-house and also use Chuck, as we do now, like we're doing in your neighborhood with the... You see the drainage is done, and Chuck will be coming up with the bridges. So if we can work that with the city and Chuck, I think we can knock out an enormous amount of sidewalks left to city handling. And the event center, well, obviously, we've been talking to some folks about an event center that's already up, and that would be great if we can bring that to fruition. So we are here to work with you. We'd love to work with you, and getting things done is what I love to do. So that being said, the only other thing I'll have on my report, to keep it brief since we've gone over all your goals, is the sales tax. And for the month of December, we were $1.9 million, which was 11% higher than last year. So thankful to the Christmas shoppers. And that's the end of my report. Could you hear me? Check, check, check. Sarah, was my...
Yes, I can hear you. I'm sorry. All of a sudden, it can be kind of... Never. (Inaudible).
Up is good.
Mayor, you mentioned sidewalks in North Oaks Park. I did have a request from a consensuare to connect the pedestrian bridge with the existing sidewalk. Apparently, it's not a sidewalk. Get some money. We'll look at that later, but...
Which one? You're talking about at North Oaks Park?
North Oaks Park, yeah.
Where's the pedestrian bridge?
At North Oaks Park.
But there's a couple of those, three. There's one in...
We have to look. I have to look. The north side.
The north side connects to a sidewalk in the park.
Was that the campus side?
No, I think what they were talking about was the one that was...
In the original plans, it has that it needed to be concrete from the bridge all the way to the park.
On Oak Street.
Well, Oak Street's connected.
Or not, the campus side.
The campus side has limestone. We can fix that. We can take care of that.
Mayor Penelope, there was one other thing that I forgot. The lift station projects, you know, that... I know the lift station project in Lakewood that connects on the backside there, I guess that's Walmart. You know what I'm talking about, Chuck? I know that lift station is a part of, you know, we still have that problem in Lakewood, where if the lift station goes out, it impacts, you know, Susan Street in that neighborhood. I know that lift station repair or the generator for that lift station is a part of the... Is that... Is that on the...
The lift station's been completely redone. There's been no rehabilitation to the sewer, because all the sewer work was concentrated east of Austin.
I said that wrong. It wasn't the lift station, it was the generators that were supposed to be attached to the lift station.
Do we have a generator?
Gary Hammond generator separately using for grants.
So that's... I need to add it to my list. I forgot that the generators for those lift stations, because when we have a loss of power, it actually impacts.
Well, I know Gary wants a generator for every lift station, and we've been working on the biggest ones first. So it's our intent to put one on every one. I'll check and see if there's even one there. I don't know if there is. Can see where in line it lies that they're...
And that's in Lakewood. That's Lakewood's other region.
Do we have any new businesses and chambers that would like to be recognized? Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of January 20, 2015, and so obtain a motion?
Sir, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 20, 2015.
All roll call.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Here, I mean, aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, number one, a resolution approving budget change year 2014-2015, number 15-03, transfer in $236,000 to sidewalk and drainage improvements for 2015, project 420-11509, from two completed projects, pedestrian bridges on JW Davis Drive.
This is hyperlinked. You should have it. This is standard form. I will explain from the benefit of those that don't remember what this is, but the city basically does all their capital improvements through two funds, either the 420 fund, which is the sales tax fund, or the 616 fund, which is the water and sewer fund. This is a 420 sales tax project. This form basically says if you do this, if you make a transfer inside the 420 fund, you can do it by council resolution. It does not have to be done by ordinance. So this is zero sum change to your budget. This is not the appropriation of new funds. What's taking place is when we adopted last year's capital projects budget, and incidentally, I will explain that briefly, there are two budget items passed in July every year. One is the regular consolidated budget. The other is the five-year capital improvements budget, and it looks sort of like this. And in each year, there are projects, as you bring me projects, and we establish priorities, we fund the initial year with our consolidated appropriation. So last year, we did fund some sidewalks on JW Davis Drive, which will take us from Phoenix Square... Phoenix Square to Fagan Drive. Did I say JW Davis or Fagan? I meant to say JW Davis.
He's at Phoenix.
Prior to doing that, the drainage is done, so we have, don't have any ditches, we have very deep ditches, as you know. And the second phase would be a long Fagan Drive, from that point to the mall, then back out to the west, towards Don Seaford. So the first phase, drainage is done, as a matter of fact, they're backfilling it now. The second phase, which we should do this year, the next couple of months, would be to run a sidewalk down the east side of JW Davis from Phoenix Square all the way down to Fagan. And in last year's appropriation, we had two pedestrian bridges, we just discussed pedestrian bridges, I think you just asked that, one at the first bridge on, across JW Davis, and there's another one a little further down to the south. And those bridges are around 115,000, 120,000 each, they're 160 feet long, they just have to go over the top of the canal. The original plan, without this appropriation, which I'm requesting tonight, was to run the sidewalks down JW Davis, run out to the road, cross over the bridge, and then run back to the sidewalk. The mayor and I took a ride, I explained to him that if we could find the money, I really don't like that, it's a safety matter, I know we have to do it on occasion, but if there's any way we can put those pedestrian bridges in right now, it would be better than doing it next year, because the bridges are on the next year's budget, we should be appropriating them. Fortunately, the tangible parish overlaid Billups Drive, an amount of 66,000, and they overlaid, longly, the amount of 170,000. So those projects, which were, are into this year's appropriation, are no longer needed, and my recommendation was to take that 236,000, transfer it into our sidewalk and drainage contract, which will be bid out in March, and put those two bridges in when we build the sidewalks, and not wait another year. So it's a zero sum, as you see, there's, there's three columns, the first column is the original appropriation, second column is the transfer amount, and the third column is the net change, and there's a zero change. So we're taking 236 from two projects which have already been completed, and putting it on to the sidewalk and drainage contract to allow us to build those two bridges.
And complete it all the way to the mall, the sidewalk itself?
Not to the mall, the mall's being done under our TEP, is that right?
To, to Fagan.
To Fagan Drive. The mall work is under TEP contract, it's a separate contract.
But the bridge-
The bridges will take it all the way to Fagan Drive. And then from Fagan Drive, that segment will either be done next year or by the TEP, and I think we just got a TEP, just got a grant for that.
That's correct.
For the Fagan Drive segment.
Correct.
So we're gonna do the city's part, the state's gonna give us a grant to do the Fagan Drive part, I think we actually signed that contract, did we not?
I don't know if this is on, we have not received the contract yet, we affirmed the resolution, and we're actually, yeah, yeah, we were awarded, and there's a list on the state's website.
Which would be good for Ms. Janice, because that means all of your sidewalks are getting done relatively quick, instead of waiting five years, like we usually have to wait around here, so we don't just have to wait. So this is the third budget change form of this budget year, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any council questions, comments? Any public questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, resolution to approve Hammond Barbecue Incorporated to sell beer and alcoholic beverages, specifically daiquiris, on a city's property line within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Homan Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue, for the hours of 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, March 27, 2015, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 28, 2015, Eric Ferris.
How y'all doing?
Good.
How are you? We're back in, in the barbecue season, this'll be our 12th year, just to tell y'all a little thing, we raised over $50,000 that we gave to eight charities last year, so our goal is to, is to keep it up over $50,000, so-
Brian's in charge?
Well, y'all don't hold it against me for having Brian here, but he is, actually, he's become very important to our board, so I gotta keep him around a little bit. But, you know, it's, it's the same thing every year, people are waiting to come to Hammond, they love the Hammond, the atmosphere, the people, the businesses downtown, everything about it is just screaming barbecue, so-
Smells good, too.
Oh, they, they love coming to Hammond, just the people, so that's why I have a waiting list of teams and judges, so.
Great event. Any council questions or comments, any public comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve Hammond Barbecue Incorporated to get a waiver of the city Hammond's open containment law within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Homan Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue, for the hours of 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, March 27, 2015, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 28, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank y'all, see y'all out there.
Okay, take care.
Number four, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with our favorite pastime of LLC, for the use of property for shooting range, Mayor Pena Pinto.
Once again, Joe and John Wong and the family allow us to use their range out towards the Tangi Ho River, and this is just a, a changing of paperwork to allow us to continue using their range, very nice of them to do so.
And I did speak with Andre, all the i's have been dotted and t's have been crossed, and-
Yes, sir, we're really not changing the agreement, it's just ownership of the properties changed, as the mayor said, so just to have the agreement with the new owner compared to the old owner, that's all we're doing.
Any council comments or questions? Any public comment?
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Holly and Smith Architects for the architectural design of the Hammond Police Station roof, Lacy Lanford.
This is only a contract to hire Holly and Smith to help us design the roof. If you recall, last year, we submitted a grant to the LGAP program to help cover the construction cost of this project. We are responsible for the architecture and design fees of that project, so this would enable us to move forward and then be ready to go when we do receive the grant, we expect that to come down, hopefully March, maybe April at the latest. Right now, the fees are based on a percentage of the construction cost, they could vary based on what comes in with the bid, but right now, the highest that we are estimated to pay is $13,210. This is in alignment with the state, the 2014 Louisiana Facility and Planning and Control sets out guidelines for architecture fees, and this, this aligns with that same percentage.
And this is a roofing system, I don't like flat roofs, I don't know anyone who does, engineers or other, and some engineers may, but when I was here 13 years ago, we changed the roof on the fire station by university, which station is that? Three, from a flat roof to a pitch roof, and we didn't have, we haven't had problems with it since. This particular roof system, because it's such a large flat roof system, is gonna be pitched up with a foaming type of membrane on one end to make this thing slope, and it's not just a flat roof, so this is, this is something that needs to be done on a building that we just spent a lot of money on.
It's a long-term solution for the building.
Any council comments or questions? Any public comments?
And just so you know, we wouldn't be handling any construction that will all go out for bid, and then we would be coming again for the approval of bids, just to remind everybody about the process.
Thank you.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I would ask council to amend the agenda for resolution supporting Southeastern, if that matters.
I would move that we amend the agenda to, to, to introduce, I guess, to adopt, to adopt the resolution to support Southeastern Louisiana University.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to amend, approved.
All right, I'll attempt to read this, it's kind of long, we've got a lot of wheresses. Whereas Southeastern Louisiana University is located in Hammond, Louisiana, and has a mission to lead the educational, economic, and cultural development of the North Shore region of Lake Pontcharne, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University provides credit and non-credit educational experiences that emphasize challenging, relevant, and innovative subjects in curriculum, and graduates thousands of students annually, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University provides a broadway of cul- broad array of cultural activities that enrich the total educational experience of its students and the community, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University embraces active partnerships that benefit faculty, students, and the community it serves with collaborative efforts that are varied and dynamic, and which range from local to global, and encompass education, business, industry, and the public sector, all of which directly or indirectly contributed to economic renewal and diversification, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University is critically important, and its continued success is necessary for the well-being of the city of Hammond, the North Shore region, and the state of Louisiana, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University has absorbed over $48 million in state cuts since 2008, adversely impacting its administration, faculty, staff, and overall infrastructure, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University's students have endured approximately 94% increase in tuition since 2008, potentially jeopardizing the student's ability to continue his or her education, and whereas Southeastern Louisiana University could be faced with even more profound setbacks, if the university was subject to more rounds of cuts, potentially positioning the university in great peril to sustain the quality of their programs, educational richness, cultural development, and economic impact, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of, City, Hammond City Council overwhelmingly demonstrate its continued support for Southeastern Louisiana University, making it clear that any projected cuts are wellfully inappropriate and will extraordinarily, be extraordinarily harmful to the vibrancy of the university's mission. My resolution of Hammond City Council duly adopted on this day, February 2015.
And I would like to, we do have a Southeastern professor in the audience, and I'm sure she can agree that it's very-
Thank you, it's very appropriate, and you're very concerned, and it's really inspirational, very show, and interesting, and concerned.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Any other public comments?
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, final adoption of orders to consider and take action, authorize a sale of tax refunding bonds, series 2015, of the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
So move.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of orders to declare a surplus and authorize a sale of items listed below to sell on GovDeals.com.
Question, question, Mr. President. In this area, I'd ask, I think I may have asked it last time, but do, is this where were the, are vehicles for the Marshals Department already taken out of this grouping, or were they, were the Marshal Office then have to purchase off of Gov Deal, or is that something that we've addressed already?
I believe we've already pulled them out of this, this is these, so-
Okay, good.
I don't think they want these.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, final adoption of orders to revise city personnel policy to delete mileage reimbursements for take-home vehicles.
So move.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, final adoption of orders to approve rezoning request by First Notice of Loneliness Community, Cassandra Damesfield to rezone the remaining west portion of a lot located at 707 West Coleman Street, from RS3 to MXC, in accordance with survey by William Bowden Jr., dated revised 5/18/2005, recommended approval by zoning commission.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, final adoption of an order to approve a rezoning request by Tangi East LLC to rezone Track D of Providence Bridge, Phase Two, from CH to RS5, located temp address 17 on Dr. John Lambert Drive, in accordance with survey by Mickey Robertson, dated September 30, 2008, recommended approval by zoning commission.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of orders to set public hearing, number one, introduction of orders to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the parish of Tangi Ho for widening, for the widening of Club Deluxe Road, and to provide for related matters. Andre?
Yes, sir, the, the parish has undertaken a project to widen Club Deluxe Road, there's a 20 by 50-foot strip within that widening area that was dedicated to the city, when Pelican Professional Park came in. The funds that are being used require the parish to be in control of that, so this is an agreement simply to transfer our right of way, if you will, of that to the parish, and the parish is gonna undertake all maintenance and all responsibility for that. And I can answer any questions in what detail at the public hearing.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
February 17.
Seventeen.
February 17.
Public hearing is set for February 17, 2015.
Number two, introduction of orders to create the position of electrician with pay grade classification of 123, Ms. Loretta Severn.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
This will be a new position for an electrician, which will be performing electrical work at all levels, including high voltage, the person will also maybe assist the lift station technicians and the wardens to a department if needed, but we are trying to get back to doing most of the work in-house.
So we're, so we're introducing an ordinance to, to add the pay grade, we're not necessarily, at this time, trying to hire someone for the job, am I saying that correctly?
No, we're creating a position of electrician, and yes, we are gonna hire someone, once we advertise, go through our process of advertising.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
I guess I, aye.
I didn't see him leave. Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for February 17, 2015.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance to create the position of electrician, I already did that. Number three, introduction of an ordinance to upgrade to carpenters, pay grade 119 to lead carpenter, pay grade 122 and concrete foreman, pay grade 120.
Currently, we have two, actually three open positions for carpenters. Two of those positions, we would like to upgrade. One to a lead carpenter. That person will be the lead person on projects within the city and also mentor and guide the other carpenters in completing the work. The other carpenter, we would like to upgrade to concrete foreman. I think every one of you all mentioned sidewalks repair as a part of your goals. So as mentioned earlier, that's what we want to do. We want to be able to do that work in-house and one of our employees who is a carpenter now has the skill level for this position and so we want to move him in a position, in a title as to what he's currently performing.
Mr. President, so that we could have a good discussion at the meeting, do we take these, all of these recommendations through the MAG review?
Yes, we did, yes.
So if you don't mind mentioning that to say that this is already being reviewed because that's, because I was going to ask you to make sure.
Absolutely. All of the jobs that I have here have been reviewed by MAG.
Okay, that's good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Number four, introduction of-
Motion to introduce.
I'm sorry.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for February 17, 2015.
Number four, introduction of an ordinance to create the position of jailer two with pay grade classification of 219.
This position is a carryover from the former mayor with the support of the chief of police to add a position that will give movement within the jail. And the position of jailer two, again, was reviewed by management advisory group and came in at a pay grade 119.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for February 17, 2015.
Thank you, Ms. Loretta.
Thank you, Ms. Loretta.
Before I ask for adjournment, I want to remind everyone that at the next council meeting, February-
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, we will have the Wilbur A. Chane Field of Waterbacks in the city of Hammond. Councilwoman Beard is working on that. I think the committee is going to meet soon and pick its recipients and I think that program will follow our council meetings, is how we generally do it. So anyway, do you have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
All pay.
Aye.
All right.